All right, good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of May 22nd. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice of our God.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins, would you take role, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Voight?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy is absent. Commissioner Mitchell is absent. Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins here. Commissioner Newsom is absent. Chairperson Fox?
Here.
And Quorum Planning Commission, we also have President Township Planning Director, Dave Campbell.
All right, next up, Item 4, Approval of Our Meeting Agenda.
I make a motion to approve our meeting agenda for May 22nd, 2014.
I'll second that. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye, motion carries. Next up, no meeting minutes. Item 6, Call to the Public. Anybody want to come forward and say anything this evening? All right, well, closed call to the public. We have no public hearing, so we'll move to Item 8A, Discussion on Updates to the Future Land Use Map and the Future Land Use Chapter of the Township's Comprehensive Plan. I think probably the best thing to do here is turn it over to our Planning Director, Dave Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Hopefully, everyone on the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to review the Planning Department's memo dated May 15th, 2014, where we, the Planning Department staff discusses the pending amendments to the Township's Comprehensive Plan. We are in the very early stages of starting this process. As the Planning Commissioners who were here on the Planning Commission in 2011 will recall, the Township's Comprehensive Plan of 2004 was amended in 2011, and particularly, the future land use chapter of that document was amended. Essentially, that future land use chapter of the 2004 Comprehensive Plan was replaced with an amendment in 2011. The Township Board and the Planning Commission have agreed that it's time to take another look at that future land use chapter and the future land use map that goes along with it. And so, what we as a staff feel is the best way to do that is essentially replace the 2011 amendment with a 2015 amendment that, again, replaces the future land use chapter of the 2004 Comprehensive Plan. What the Township wants to take a look at is whether the, some of the undeveloped or underdeveloped properties in the Township are master planned for their best use in terms of their residential development potential. Have we master planned some of our large pieces of undeveloped property properly with the densities and the potential lot sizes that are most desirable to today's home buyers? The Township is also going to be working with a Housing Market Analysis Consultant. We're going to have our first meeting with them in June, and they're going to help us make that determination of whether or not Heartland Township is master planned property to, properly, to accommodate the housing developments that we, that are most desirable to today's home buyers. So, what I hope tonight's, the outcome of tonight's discussion can be is, take a look at the rats. This map that I keep losing. The Planning Department has developed a very preliminary map of Heartland Township where we show, bear with me again, we show in pink some of the properties, and not necessarily property specific, but areas of the Township, that the Planning Department staff feels at least are worthy of a discussion amongst the Planning Commission of, are those properties that we should be taking a close look at as part of this future land use chapter and future land use map update? Also on the map is our existing water and sewer lines, water shown in blue and sewer shown in yellow, and having that infrastructure in place is certainly an important factor in accommodating for future residential development, particularly if we're talking about medium-density or higher-density residential development. What we'd like is, in anticipation of the meeting that we're having with the Housing Market Analysis Consultant, which we've scheduled for June 9th, is, we'd like to be able to come to that consultant with a map that, a revised version of this map, that says, here are some specific areas within our Township that we want you to take a particular look at to determine what their housing potential is, whether they're a master plan to best fit that potential, and so that consultant can give their best analysis on whether we have master planned for the development that the housing market wants and that we as a Township desire. So, the cover memo that goes along with this map has some additional questions with respect to the future land use chapter of the 2011 amendment, and we asked the Planning Commission to at least start the brainstorming process of whether or not the existing residential future land use designations are appropriate for some of these properties. Do we want to re-designate some of these properties? Do we want to create some new designations? That particular chapter of the Comprehensive Plan has some residential development policies. Are those policies still valid in 2014, or has the market changed since 2011? Maybe we want to take another look at what those residential development policies are. So, I wanted to start that discussion, and it's going to be an ongoing discussion over the coming months, but at the very least, what I would hope is my takeaway from tonight's discussion is whether this map is an, is a accurate summary of the areas of the Township that we would want to work with a housing consultant on, saying, here are the areas that we would like you to take a particular look at. So, if the Planning Commissioners have any thoughts on any of that, I'd love to hear them. As supplemental material, I have included the scope of what the Housing Market Analysis Analyst has agreed to do. I've included the 2011 amendment, which in effect is the future land use chapter of our Comprehensive Plan, and I've also included a map of our existing future, our existing future land use map, which as you're well aware, was updated in 2011. And the idea is that we will update it again here in 2014 and into 2015.
So, do you want us to comment on any specific area? Is that what you're, if?
That's as good a place to start as any. Are there any areas or particular properties that either aren't highlighted here in pink that maybe should be, and vice versa? Are there any that are highlighted that you as a Planning Commission think you don't see the potential there for reevaluation for their housing market's potential?
We, in 2011, looked at, if this laser pointer works that good, I don't know if this one works or not. Can I borrow yours? We looked at this one, this one, and this one are the three that come to my mind, and discussed those at some great length, and I think we maybe moved them at that time or made decisions not to move them. I don't know if you remember, Larry, what we, this one here, we paired up to be most similar to, I think, Heartland Estates, that it's next to, and these two here were more of what this whole general area of the Township was on the future land use map for densities.
So, for reference, for the benefit of the audience, if nothing else, this property here is now the River Church construction site, but the church is developing on probably the front third of, the front third even of that property, and we've already had discussions with them that their bigger master plan is to someday have single-family behind that. We haven't seen that yet. If that helps give anyone their bearings.
What was that last part you said? What was the last portion of that statement?
That the River Church, we've had discussions with them that someday they foresee that being single-family behind the church. We haven't seen any concrete plans yet on what they might look like.
Right, and I think where the yellow line ends is the River Church. I think the rest of this is between the River Church and Hacker Road, right there.
Yes.
And I think I just remember talking that whole square, but.
So, this map here is the future land use map as it sits right now, right?
Yes, sir. And I don't mean to suggest that the future land use map designation for those properties are wrong. I just, I, those are properties that may or may not warrant another look.
So, estate residential, is that what that is? Or medium suburban density residential?
Low suburban density residential, which envisions anywhere from one to two dwellings per acre, so half acre to full acre lots.
Which is what Heartland Estates basically looks like.
The color just doesn't match up to me. I mean, what's the bright yellow? So, I'm looking at the future land.
Oh, forgive me, medium suburb, you were right. Medium suburban density residential is what those two properties are currently designated as.
And that's the half, two to, one to two per acre?
Yes.
Okay.
And the stuff down, down the map now?
Is estate residential. What's estate residential? It's in here. Just got to read.
The, two or more acres per dwelling unit. So, a large lot, sort of like our CA district, CA zoning district.
Well, that's all stuff that we looked at in 2011, so I don't know that it's very productive to relook at it again unless you have some overwhelming issues that say it's incorrect, but.
I don't mean to say it's incorrect. I will say that what we've heard, at least from a few residential developers, is half acre to one acre may not be the price point that today's home buyers are looking for. Half acre to an acre, you're looking at a $300,000-plus house, and today's housing market, what seems to be selling, based on the conversation that we've had, is something more in the $200,000 range, which is more of a quarter acre lot.
Yeah.
So, maybe the question is, do we need more of that? And if so, where?
Well, I was just thinking elsewhere, not there. I'm thinking closer to major thoroughfare as far as the stuff in the southwest corner, and there's quite a bit of development down there already that's larger acre, acreage sites.
The road wouldn't support that anyway.
Pardon?
The road wouldn't support that anyway down there.
Oh, Bergen and Hacker.
Bergen and Hacker.
Yeah. So, I would leave those alone, but there's certainly a lot of other pink on the map.
Just for confirmation, when you say those, are we just talking the?
One, two, and, one, two, and three. Those would be the three I would, personally, speak of if you didn't feel differently.
I don't know about the property north of M-59.
Yeah, that's the only one that could be.
That would be support for the road. Higher density.
Could review that.
It could. The only thing that, I mean, you know, I kind of go back to when I got on the Planning Commission, and the 2004 plan was basically, you know, gather the density closer to the intersection, less dense as you moved out. And, you know, this is definitely moving out, so, I mean, to put more density there is kind of contrary to that original plan. I'm not saying that, you know, it shouldn't, it just isn't the first place that I think of for that.
Well, and I would add, look at what Osceola has on the other side, by the lack of infrastructure and roads, and that's why I made the comment, there's a lot of other pink on the map that could be better options.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I don't think there's another, unless we're just talking about the River Church's back two-thirds or whatever it is, that other parcel, I don't have, think that is going to be able to come up with access to M-59.
Sure.
They're going to have to access Hacker Road, and unless somebody's looking to pave that road, I don't see putting any higher density off of that road, or, I mean, you might be talking about traffic light there if you did that, too.
Sure.
So.
I don't necessarily have any ideas whether we want to move east to west or north to south, or if we just, I, okay, I'll throw this out. The Township Manager and I had a discussion about this area in particular. The Planning Staff, and again, these are just brainstorming. The thought was, given, so this is along the north side of Dunham Road, not far from here, some of these large undeveloped areas that are in close proximity to our school campus and close proximity to our village area, but at the same time, not too far away from the M-59 corridor. Now, granted, Dunham Road would need to see some significant upgrades to accommodate any kind of large, you know, large-scale housing development, but is there any thoughts on whether or not this is an area we would want to take a look at? Thinking, you know, long-term, 20 years out.
I know that in the past, I thought that we would see housing developments happen off of Dunham Road. I don't know that I ever envisioned that it would be stuff that dense, but what's its future right now?
Those low suburban density residential.
Acre, no, no, it's not that.
One to two acres per dwelling unit. More than one, less than two. That's the master plan density designation.
So, it's already more dense than those pieces that we just talked about, right?
So, yes, so those would be two acres or greater. No, the pieces that we talked about, the pieces we talked about were medium suburban, so that's half acre to one acre. Now, you're at low density, so now you're talking one acre to two acre.
Oh, that's.
So, less dense than those ones over at Hacker.
At the back, they're far away.
It looks like, it looks like the Bullards up there is of the medium suburban, this right here, coming off Bullard Road, south of Dunham. It's kind of looking like it's the lighter yellow.
Yeah, like sand red.
Right, and it also looks like the piece along Clark Road, right here, is of the same light yellow, right across the street. Well, no, north.
Right across the street?
Yeah, right across the street from here looks like it is also of the light yellow.
Yeah, as well as to our cell.
Yep. Do some zooming in here.
The light is medium. We should write these down as he says.
And medium is one to two acre. And low is two, two plus, two.
Wait, which is two plus?
Oh.
Now, I think we got it the other way.
Now, it's right here.
Yeah, that's two.
Low is one to two. So, what's medium?
Medium is?
Medium suburban is half to one.
Half to one, acre to one acre.
Half to one acre.
Uh-huh.
And low suburban is one to two?
Yes.
Okay. So, estate is the two?
Two plus.
Two plus. Boy, that medium and estate colors just kind of look the same.
Yeah, they do.
Very close.
So, what, the prior map showed in pink is kind of this area through here.
Mm-hmm.
The low suburban density. And I guess my question is, is there any thoughts of whether that could go higher in terms of density? Again, we're not necessarily looking for an answer tonight of yes-ish, now.
Look at it.
It's, let's take a closer look at it.
I think you could not get one level up because of its proximity to the schools, the proximity to 59. The paved access of Clark and Bullard would only require the paving of that stretch of Dunham, because we wouldn't allow it to develop without a paved road.
Bullard paved all the way up to?
I believe it's paved to Dunham.
It is.
It is, yeah.
Yeah. So, you'd just be looking at that stretch in between, and it would be part of the PD. I think it'd be worth taking a look at to make it medium suburban.
It's all a bunch of farms right now, right?
Right.
Right.
How far away is it from sewer?
Well, the school, the high school.
Yeah, their system is considered private.
Did they not hook up to ours? They originally had their own private sector.
They're on ours now.
They're on ours now, because that's where the solar panels went.
Right, but I would double check with DPW. Is my understanding incorrect, Larry, that once it goes onto the school property, it becomes a private system?
Yeah, I don't know anything about that one. Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't, right, I mean, you don't have anything identified here until you get over to Heartland Road.
Right.
No. Can't just necessarily, I don't know that they have main running through there.
I think, my understanding is they do have main running through here, but the reason it's not shown in yellow is it's private once it gets to this point here.
Yeah, so they probably just took whatever their discharge point was and connected it up to our sewer, probably isn't necessarily capable of handling.
Yes, I don't know that they, I don't know that we could connect over to this side of the school property because we'd be connected to a private system. Part of this, yeah, sure, and part of this is we're stating, it goes hand-in-hand with something the DPW Department is looking at, which is a kind of a ready-to-connect analysis that kind of goes hand-in-hand with this. I mean, they're looking at it from a future land use standpoint. They're looking at it, the DPW at the Board's request is looking at, where do we see the sewer and water infrastructure going next, if anywhere, and so, they're certainly interested in how this conversation is going to go. If I can offer another area up in here, so this is our planned light industrial research and development area. Now, granted, this is not a master plan currently for residential, and if we're only, if the intent of this update is to only look at residential, then maybe this is a moot point. But, given that the Township, you know, given that this is a, has, really has a lot of potential for some sort of large-scale development with the freeway interchange and the US-23 visibility, I did want to start the conversation of whether the master plan designation of the planned development, planned industrial research and development, is that, is that too limited perhaps? Should it have some sort of a limited retail component to it as well, or some sort of more of a medical office park component? And it may just be a matter of, if we do feel it should, it may just be a matter of amending, revising the description for that area. But, the way it's described now in the master plan, it is pretty well focused on light industrial research and development, and that may or may not propose something like a hospital or some sort of a satellite camp, university campus, something like that. If something like that were to be proposed, I would have to think that we as a Township would be interested, but it may not be consistent with our master plan, so do we want to take a look at the master plan?
Would it be broadening what we could envision there? Would it be too crazy to, we had talked about the special planning area and maybe taking a look at what that, that was described as, what you could do in there, and we talked about the option of taking that special planning area and maybe adding some potential uses to it, or densities, or whatever we thought would need to be done versus changing its designation and calling it that, a super flexible area of the Township. Could you take a designation like that, if you did it right, and take it up there and do the same thing?
Have, so, with the definition of the special, if we called this special planning area and we broaden the definition of it, the definition would be the same for this area? I keep pointing at my screen like anybody can see it. Would it be the same as this area here as the M-59 Fenton Pleasant Valley Special Planning Area?
That was my question, if, would we want to consider something like that? Because if you want to go to maximum flexibility of use and there is nothing there, and if you ended up with a retail component or a hospital with a residential component, all of those things, it could all be encompassing in that designation, just as we envisioned down at 59 in Pleasant Valley. Just, it's a thought.
And I think the answer would be, I don't know that we could decide it tonight, is it worth considering further? The opposite would be, nope, we're comfortable with the planned industrial research and development designation and definition as it is. If we think that there is room for taking another look at that, then that's, for this evening's purpose, I think, what I would want, need to hear.
Well, it's presently zoned general commercial, a lot of that, so I don't think we have to worry about the retail stuff because somebody could come in and develop it under its current zoning, right, and bring in the commercial element.
They could. My thought would be if someone wanted to do some sort of a research park, but at one of the corners have some sort of a little retail center with a, you know, coffee shop and a pharmacy and the types of things that might serve office, light industrial, R&amp;D-type users, and if they wanted to come in as a planned development, which I think is what we envisioned, is having this develop one way or another as a cohesive plan development. The way it's written in the Comprehensive Plan now, it doesn't leave open the possibility of a limited retail component or a, like I say, it really is limited to light industrial R&amp;D, and could we broaden that?
So, I guess my, I guess I'm trying to look at this a little bit bigger picture than what we need right now. So, say you open it up and you create this big broad, you know, grouping of what could happen there, and the first one to the table is a residential development or a medical office, and then you've basically squeezed out any industrial type uses, because are they going to kind of co-locate with each other? And with the small amount of industrial space that we have in the Township, are we kind of limiting the future of where that stuff might locate? That's my only concern. I'm not saying it's an overwhelming thing, it's just something that crosses through my mind that I think we want to be careful with. I mean, I know, you know, I remember back when the previous, the Board prior to 2004 was talking about needing industrial development because of tax base. Now, with what's happening with personal property tax, I don't think that industrial property is always going to end up having that benefit to your community of the increase of tax base. So, you know, I don't know if it is, would be viewed the same way any longer, but I'm not an expert on industrial property and how much money it brings in.
Sure. I think those are good points. The one I would add, the couple that I might add, though, is I think the two can exist.
The two being industrial.
Industrial and residential. The light industrial. I mean, you go down Bergen Road right now, and you go down Bergen Road, one of our biggest residential, main thoroughfares we have feeding all those houses, and they all go through LI to get there, and you have residential that backs up to it. Now, you go down in Brighton, and you go down Rickett Road, which is their, one of their two industrial areas, and most of their, a huge piece of the city's population is right there, in that southwest corner of the city itself, off of Rickett and Woodman Lake, and they've got a bunch of condos. And they've got a bunch of condos and, I mean, it's just very dense. So it could work, but I agree that it could have an impact on what somebody would be willing to do up there.
How about if we left that corner alone and went further east and had more density, residential density? That way you'd have your industrial, your light research, light industry, general commercial, guy at the exit, Clyde Road, and then move the residential eastward.
Through the Apple Orchards and the...
Apple Orchard and the south side of roads, all, there's horse ranches and stuff there in the area. That would also kind of help the traffic flow. You'd have your residents not building up at that intersection quite so bad, get on the freeway there.
Well, the other thing, when I looked at the pink map and it relates to all this, a lot of this density we're talking about needs to be close to 59 and 23, but there are people who don't want to live on 59 and 23 also. And if we can move a mile off one way or another, that's just enough to get you away from what that is, but yet you're convenient, close enough to have access to use it. So there could be some thought of maybe, maybe you do do something like that, push it a little bit further east. I mean, this is a future land use map, so it could remain an apple orchard into eternity. But then on the other hand, it could also be something else.
Well, the other part of the thought of that was is that those industries, a lot of times will generate a need for a community for their employees. And they could give that, they could offer that to them by having a residential community in the same area where they'd work.
The other is, is the southeast corner, that is so hilly and rolling, it probably wouldn't work for industrial and it probably would end up being more of a residential component. It's very, it's got a lot of movement to it, a lot of elevation change in this piece right.
Did you keep up with this?
I did. So, but I will ask to verify. So am I hearing that there's a consensus on maybe even expanding the, the pink area into further east along the Clyde Road?
Well, I, I think we, we're kind of trying to leave that pink area industrial, the industrial and commercial, general commercial area alone, moving to pink.
Okay. That was going to be my follow-up question.
I guess the other option is to convert it to a special planning area, but I just thought if we left the general commercial and the light industry, light research alone in that corner and then move your pink area for, for interest for this study.
Maybe east to Hartland Road. This is probably Hartland. My guess is this is Hartland Road right here. Maybe if you took all of, this is Hartland Road, so maybe if you took all of this and this and made it pink.
Yeah, well, Hartland Road can't be that far over.
Well, this is the orchard.
I think that...
This is Hartland Road coming up like this.
Oh, there it is, right there on the angle, because it angled it, that's like right there. So if you took that and made that pink.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry.
The definition of that area there, that's, you've got code recorded already, should include, you know, a medical, it shouldn't only be industrial, but I don't know that we want to get into it as, as a high density residential.
No, I, I, I agree. I, I, this is the one exception to, I think, what our conversation is. Maybe I should use a different color than hot pink. Maybe I should use hot blue or something. I, for the most part, I think we want to talk about residential. I thought that this was the one area where, while we're looking at other areas of future land use map, is this one that could be expanded, not necessarily to include residential, although we could talk about that, but broaden beyond just light industrial R and D to other types of commercial, office, medical type uses so that we have that flexibility. Because right now it is, the way it's, it's written, it is pretty limited to research and development, light industrial.
So, on the future land use map that we have right now, it has an area that you've extended into that pink that is...
Multiple family.
I think that still makes sense. And then as Keith and Larry have said, maybe you look at, as you continue to move away from that interchange, you know, moving your density from most intense to less intense.
So pick a medium urban or something like that or a medium suburban for the unpinked area right now that we were just talking about, this area here.
Okay. Thank you. Two questions. So the other one was what to do with that corner? Should we leave it as it is or open it up for other options?
Yeah, I think that's the third point right now. Well, I think more options are better.
I think so, I agree.
So just broaden, broaden the definition of it a little bit and include words like regional medical and limited commercial or accessory commercial. It's not unusual to have an office park that has a little coffee shop on the, on the corner just to...
It could have a restaurant there even, depending on what it is.
And maybe we want to put another guest in.
A guest?
Yeah.
That's everything.
Is there another area to move to, to discuss?
Well, it was called Hartland Glen Special Planning Area. Which is all along... When we had our joint meeting, we had a brief discussion on this area. Why did we bring up the topic of broadening, broadening what could go in a special planning area? Was it due to residential density? Does anybody remember? Was it uses? What was it? I don't recall why.
I don't know that we specifically said that we needed to broaden this one. I thought we kind of talked about taking the same type of philosophy that was...
Oh, and using it elsewhere.
And using it elsewhere.
Okay, that was a, thank you. I didn't have it come up. Well, to me, this is a good area to look at for up in the density in the Hartland Glen area because right now it's sitting at medium one half to one acre. And whether you reconfigured golf courses, kept it, didn't do it, whatever, you could certainly see at the proximity to 59, you've got some multi-family right next door to it and the special planning area sitting there. Maybe there's an opportunity to look at something more than a one half to one acre. Look at a lot of golf course communities. Those are not half acre lots.
Mm-hmm. So half acre lots are...
Like 21,000.
Like Hartland Estates, right?
Uh...
It's the same color as Hartland Estates.
Yep.
Same merino is, is what it is right now.
Yep.
And you're saying that maybe look at going to something more, more dense than that?
Yeah. Like maybe the medium urban debt is, which is two to three dwelling units per acre, which is one-third to a half acre. Says lot sizes...
So that's around the...
Yeah, it says lot sizes would be eight to 20,000 square feet and acres like 43,000 and some odd square feet as I recall.
Forty-three by sixty.
Yeah, but if you go in there with condos and things like that, which would lead itself to a type of housing product we don't have, those are on pretty small parcels.
Yeah, but I, I guess I'm more thinking of the overall density, you know? If you took that whole thing and you thought there's no golf course there, you're just putting...
Oh, if you lined up the roads and filled it?
Right, right.
Yeah, well, that's a lot.
You really want that there?
That is a lot.
Because you could, you could probably get this kind of density that's there right now with condos and still some open space.
Mm-hmm.
Any thoughts, Steve?
The, again, right now we're at half to one acre and yes, we, we would be looking at the overall gross density, the net, the gross density. Again, I'm, I'm just asking because again, this whole conversation started with, is our predominantly large lot master planning, planning us out of the housing that people wants, that people want? Is this property a potential for a little bit higher density, something along two to three units per acre as opposed to one to two? That would get the lot sizes and the housing type to where that's what the buyers want? And is this...
Is the two to three down to the, is that the polka dotted color or whatever you want to call it?
That is the polka dotted one.
Yes. Medium, medium urban density.
It's two to three per acre?
It's, uh, it's one acre for every two to three dwellings. Lot sizes would be 8,000 to 20,000.
And what...
And that's, that's what we're hearing is the house that people are snatching up right now.
And what is the special planning area? Did it ever talk about density of housing or...
It does. It talks about a base density of three to four units per acre with, with an opportunity for bonus density.
Yeah, and they had a lot of apartments and things in that across the street that really bumped that density up. So this would be something a little less than what that is right now.
And again, you're not deciding tonight.
No, but we're saying this are areas that they could look at. My thought would be I just wouldn't take that density as far down as you have it because it looks like you're taking it all the way down to the township line. Maybe that's a little too far. You got it? Is that what you're doing there or not?
My, my pink?
Taking it to Commerce Road.
Commerce Road is here.
Oh, no, you aren't, okay.
This is Lone Tree.
Okay.
Lone Tree.
And then it fits with across the street there in the southeast corner of Pleasant Valley and 59, which is multiple family residential, this piece right here.
Now, further to, right there.
Right here. This is orange on the current future land use map, which is basically apartment type, really high density.
So what is, um, what is, like Woodcliff? What kind of density is that?
That's the orange.
That's, yes, the multi-family, multiple family residential. And give me a minute to verify what we call that for density. Maximum density of eight units per acre.
Yeah. You're not talking about going that far.
No, I was just talking about doing two to three per acre.
And the only thing that we have, we don't have any other product than single family homes that are built in here.
We don't have a lot...
We don't have a similar type of density.
No.
I don't think we have any undeveloped property with the medium urban density residential designation. And that's the two to three.
Just lost their name down here, the subdivision down here on the left as you go to 59, looks like it at least, if it was done that way, the future land use map looks like that's similar. That's the orange polka dotted color.
Right, right, right.
I know there's already a higher demand for condos and the future's going to probably create a much more demand than we have even right now. So if we keep that in mind, do we have a place for them?
Well, you got some multiple family places, right?
Yeah.
Got some multiple family outside by that area we just talked about, right?
And through here.
You got some of it...
That's already there.
Over there, Dave's little hand is, right?
Yeah. That's Woodcliff there, right?
Now, this is Fox Ridge, which isn't built out and then there's future phases planned.
The only, the only thing I would say is that, you know, a lot of our multiple family is right up against US-23. There might be some people that would like that type of living without living right on top of the expressway. I mean, you don't really have much of that, other than that piece over at the southeast corner of 59 and Pleasant Valley. You got a couple of little things along 59.
So look at more areas for the multiple family designation?
Well, are you jumping off of Hartland Glen right now? I just refer to it as that because that's the general area of what's there. Did we figure out what we wanted to do there or have them look at or wanting us to look at it?
I'm certainly willing to look at it. I'm just kind of thinking, I mean, is it single family that we want around that but on small lots or is it attached condominiums?
Well, I was picking medium urban because you're going to get a lot of open space and you're going to get it in the calculation. If we go with eight, you know, I pictured the multiple family, the eight. Now, if we can't get a condo in medium urban density, I mean, the whole appeal of that piece is its access and what the property itself is and we need to, we need to provide that in the community. So that's why I was kind of looking at it. If we took it to orange and put it to eight, it probably would be really dense. I mean, over what somebody's probably looking for. I mean, there are no condos in Hartland, basically. You know, we have one project on the...
But I think, like to think of that, these discussions are part of what we're getting some professional guidance on.
Right.
And, you know, whether we go to the two to three or whether we go to the eight, I wonder, I would think, let's, let's get their input on that as well. But let's at least say, hey, let's look at this one in particular. And what do you, the professionals, think?
Think is best.
Think.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it could be no more. That's all you want? We'll be done.
Oh, I, I thought, I thought I made that clear. That's what I'm looking for. Are there any properties that aren't pink that should be pink? Are there any properties that are pink that shouldn't be pink?
We just wanted to manage it to the... Well, then let's, what is it, across the street? You got some more there?
So this is the, this is the gravel extraction area for now, but gravel just extraction areas oftentimes, once they're, they're extracted, they turn into nice lake, lakefront developments.
I think you should look at it.
Look at it.
So that piece right there, nor...
Any air? Thoughts of along the north side of the M-59 corridor, east of Pleasant Valley slash Hacker?
Up the northeast corner. What are you talking about?
Got it. That's where he is right now.
North side of M-59, east of Fountain Road.
Yeah, because I said Hacker.
I may have. Been a long day.
Yeah, sure, look at it.
I would look at it.
I would. That's a good, increase the density there.
And through here, kind of same thought, let's at least have a look at it.
I mean, that one seems a little weird to me, only because I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, what we got going on there. So where's Bullard Road at?
Bullard Road is right there.
Isn't it further that way?
Right here.
At the lake?
Yeah, there you go. So Bullard curves around, yeah, exactly.
Right there.
Here's our township park. This picture was taken before. So this is currently master planned, a mixture of predominantly, mostly office along the M-59 front edge with multiple family behind, with a few spots where some low suburban comes in toward the back and through this area in particular. So...
... designation makes it flexible.
Yeah, look at it.
I'd look at it. I'm not sure I know what I'm talking about, but I am wondering if that should be looked at as more of a special planning area designation than... You certainly have the ability to put office, you have commercial, you have residential. Then it leaves it all flexible. then it leaves it all flexible.
My only worry about creating everything as flexible.
Well, that's a transition point.
Our job as planners is just like, oh yeah, we'll be flexible.
Well, the difference, can you pull it back in or just that part where we were on? I mean, where we are right now is, this is all kind of a commercial running into office and at some point it transitions to residential. Does it transition here or here and do we really care in that half mile stretch?
Except there's no residential there now along that way, right?
Well, there is right there.
Yeah, right there, but that's not in that color.
There is right here.
Yeah, that's still not in that color that we're talking about. And it's already got, I mean, several, some of those already have office on the front of them, don't they?
They, they do. And there's, there are a few there and if you look at your future land use map, there's pockets of the multiple family tucked in behind it.
Well, and I guess there's nothing wrong with looking at it, but I mean, it almost seems to me that it's already the right designation. I mean, it's got office in the front. I mean, it's got multiple family in the back, I don't know how much more dense, if you're looking for density locations.
Uh, yeah, I don't. I just am wondering if we're better off taking that and designating it more as the area within the area having the flexibility instead of saying the office in the front and high density in the back, allowing the flexibility of within that whole space being those things. Looks like there's some waterway in there and everything, maybe it's actually.
In the, right.
It may be more attractive for residential than an office building.
Well, and I, I mean, you got that, that Bullard Lake, well, the sub that's, that's west of Bullard Lake.
Here.
Countryside and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Where Dave's area is. I don't know how much you want to push some of those uses back upon them either. I mean, right now, they kind of have a buffered, I mean, it is a little bit higher density next to them. And then the multiple family and then the office.
Is this consultant going to look at something and say you have too much orange, which is, you shouldn't have as much of this eight acre units per acre and maybe you need to have more of the two to three per acre and let's take some of this orange and lessen the density versus increase it? Is that, are they looking at all of it?
I think it's a fair question to ask, I mean.
Because I would question whether I'd want an apartment building in my backyard if I lived in Sundance or whatever the name of that street is, would I prefer to have a nice looking office building versus an apartment with a, you know, a unit per acre that's got activity at the same time of day I'm at home, where an office is when I'm at work.
That can be part of the conversation, sure.
There's just a lot of orange there butting up against that. That's quite a heavy transition. But I don't know there's a big enough parcel there to do much else with it.
Right, right. You almost like move that, those, create more of an office, parks, type of thing?
You'd be better off with that than you would that orange on it from the standpoint of its impact to the existing neighbors. I don't know where we got for that one, but. Did you get all that down?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Up and down Old 23, this area in particular?
Let's go north first, let's go that right there.
This is Walden Woods, obviously, and the Majestic Golf Course. Currently, its master plan designation is residential recreation. And I think it's a designation that makes sense. It is pretty open. Land uses permitted within this designation would include single family residences, multifamily, campgrounds, golf courses, banquet facilities, outdoor driving ranges, so on and so on, bike paths, pedestrian trails, athletic fields. The only thought is, do we want to have, as we do in a special planning area, some thoughts of a base density? Or is this enough of a blank slate that we don't even know that we would want to consider that? Or do we at least want to have that conversation with, as part of a broader conversation with our consultant?
Well, I think we should talk about it with our consultant. I could see different things happening in there and I think the property owners do too.
Sure.
Everything from condos to single family to small acre, you know, small, small lot homes. Maybe there's an area of it that wants to have larger acre parcels, you know, depending on what the market is, I'm sure that's something that they're interested in. I don't even see it in here, I was just looking to see why.
You looking for the definition?
Yeah.
Page nineteen?
Is it on there? Okay. That's what I was looking for. Oh, sorry.
My thought on this is residential recreation probably still should apply. It's more a question of, could we take a look at the way that's defined and ensure that that's how we want that definition to continue to read?
Well, it kind of leaves it open for him in terms of the density.
It does. And if that's how we want to keep it.
Well, I mean, so if you put a number on it, that just limits them.
It does.
And if we're looking for more density opportunities, I don't know what the point would be there.
I.
Unless we're thinking we don't want them to be more dense than a certain number.
I think my intent in coloring it in pink is to acknowledge that we would be remiss if we didn't at least have this conversation or a few more conversations, given the size of that property and the fairly unlimited potential of what could happen to it over the next 20 years.
Well, certainly I don't think there's anything wrong with talking about it, but it seems to provide an awful lot of flexibility already for them, so.
Maybe we're just, be careful that it doesn't get too dense and let's say way around the whole lake or something. Maybe we just have to think about how to provide density, but maybe it's defined in some way so it doesn't get over dense. I don't know. You know, I mean, because they've got some areas, right, where it's very intense. And right now, they have the flexibility to do whatever, right? We don't have any density limits at all on it.
There's no parameters. I will say that, you know, the first sentence is, or under intended land uses for residential recreations, land uses in this category provide for the preservation of natural features as well as provide residential amenities.
Right.
So the intent is pretty clear that we all acknowledge that that's a very desirable natural amenity that's of value to the whole township and we wouldn't want to see that compromised.
Right, but I know they're expanding and they're doing more and more septic and whatever and there is the lake and there is a certain capacity there and I don't know, we just have to be careful. I don't know. It's beautiful and I know they want to take good care of it. But I know also they have a septic lagoon system that can get to a certain level and they're trying to expand it for different uses, which is fine, but is there a level that we just have to be careful about?
Well, they, Larry, you know better than I, they're into the sewer system now, so I would think anything new would probably hook to it.
Well, I don't know that for sure because I know they were looking at some new improvements, which were all good. But they were talking about their existing lagoon, septic, what Al Florida could handle and no big deal, I just want to make sure, and I'm sure they do, that everything is done environmentally in a safe manner, that certain areas aren't overburdened.
They certainly have a lot of capacity and as far as what they, in terms of water and sewer capacity and what they've acquired, how much of that actually goes into the site right now? I mean, you can see where the water and sewer lines are and they don't actually go into that site now because there isn't a lot to connect to.
Well, there's not a lot developed on it.
Right.
No.
But what there is, but what there is, Sue's correct, is being accommodated with well and septic.
Yeah, but I would say there's, I mean, I mean, if we're talking within that whole thing, yeah, there's well and septic systems in there, but.
Yeah, it's mostly golf course, open land and all that.
Right, I mean, a few houses here.
A few houses, and then you've got the campground intense.
They have, they have a plan though that they would like to ultimately see.
Yes.
So, and, but I'm sure that it needs to be fluid enough to deal with market conditions on housing, you know?
Totally.
Lot sizes and houses are getting smaller, their plan wants to accommodate that.
That's right.
So they didn't want, I'm sure they don't want the rigidity of, you know, one acre parcels.
Right.
And I don't think anybody's suggesting that.
No one's suggesting that.
Yeah.
I guess right now we want to keep it pink just to keep our eyeballs on it and make sure that we allow flexibility, but it's not maybe too extreme for protection of.
Yeah, let them evaluate and give their opinion and we can decide what we want to do with it.
Yeah.
I think we're down in, mostly in through here.
Yeah.
So this property, we have, this property is for sale along M-59 between Autumn Woods and San Marino. We have had some interest in doing some different things in there and we'll continue to have concept meetings on that one. Right now, it's designated public quasi-public, most likely because it was always owned by the Detroit Presbyterian, it was always envisioned as being a future church. So my question may be, granted, it's not a huge piece of property, it's nine acres, but is part of this process taking, you know, updating that future land use designation from something other than public quasi-public, given that the chances of it now being a use that fits into that designation are unlikely. It's most likely to go some form of residential or.
Yeah, I don't think public quasi-public fits.
Right.
I mean, it probably didn't fit then when they put it on there. I mean, just because that's who owned it. I think you got to be careful about that designation.
I just don't think it should be any more than whatever Autumn Woods is.
No.
That's my opinion.
Right, right. I just don't think that quasi-public.
Because it fits.
It should be harmonious with that stuff.
Down along Friggin', the old Tamarack Boy Scout campgrounds area and. We're talking a pretty big piece of the township here.
So that's Bergen, the yellow line up there is the sewer line along Bergen?
Yes.
There it is?
Yeah, and Old 23 curving along this way. Mostly undeveloped with some large lot houses through here along Bergen.
And that's all the way to the, your pink or purple ends of the township line?
Yep. What happens on that side of the line is another story.
Well, there are smaller acre parcels, you can hardly see them there, but there are, I don't know what those are, but there's, they're probably half to one acre parcels or whatever they might be.
I would agree.
On the northern part there?
I think it should be a candidate to look at it. It's a gorgeous piece of property. It probably provides a lot of the, what's the word, aesthetics, but it could be really an attractive looking residential development. I think that's providing people something that is not right on the freeway or right not on 59 and has, you know, the trees, it's got some rolling, it does have the farmland in the front. Easily could transition from Old 23 back to that subdivision there in Meadowview that it would back up to, but I think you could easily see something greater than what it is and different.
What are the lot sizes in Meadowview?
There isn't much that's less than an acre, but the, the map is the same as half to one. There's a couple three quarter, most of them are one plus, there are some, a few twos, most of them probably are between one and one and a quarter.
Same thing as San Marino.
I would say so when you look at it.
At least color wise.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's definitely want to take a look at.
Now with the, yeah, I would definitely would. Could you scroll just to the west real quick, to the Beddix property? It's right there under the two. That's under consent judgment and all that. It's certainly not probably the color that it is. Should that be changed on the map at all? I know it's not a future, it is, or it is what it is, I guess is what I'm going to say.
I, I don't know that it's short sighted to say we don't want to take a 20 year view at it, of it because of the consent judgment, because I suppose it's not out of the realm of the possibility that that consent judgment could be, could be amended?
I mean, it would never go denser, but it certainly could be what Meadowview and San Marino are. And that's what it probably consent judgments out to be because I think it matches Meadowview?
Mm-hmm.
Just curious what the coloring on it is.
Oh.
Why it is.
We can't work there.
Okay, let's not do that.
Because you just said the one to the north of it we shouldn't touch, which is that same color as Divine Lake. So if you're starting to change that, then why aren't you looking at that?
That's true. It's a state residential, just to answer your question, which is the two plus. Is it? Shall I make that pink? Or is what I'm hearing that the one's kitty corner to it?
I'd leave it alone.
I'd leave it alone.
Along the east side of 23, along Blaine Road here, granted, this is mostly wet through here and I don't know what its potential is, but I suppose with enough engineering, anything's possible. You know, here's Walmart here, just to give you your bearings.
We actually had an informal on a piece of that years ago. Somebody wanted to build in there.
Really?
Yep.
It's not the con, not the condo?
No, it's just that swampy land. Blaine in the back of that subdivision, Heartland Shores.
I don't think part of that's conservation.
No, it's not? No, it's north of there. The conservation easement's north of there.
Back in through here, yeah?
Yes.
Right.
So it's a, it's a state residential, which regardless of how swampy it is, I wonder if that's, given its proximity to the freeway and its proximity to some lower density lake lots, if two plus acre master planning for these properties might not be the most reasonable?
I think you could definitely look at it.
And.
I think it's a pretty sensitive area though.
It is.
Well, you, but they could look at it. I mean, you may come back and it is what it is. It'll never be developed.
I think maybe close to the finish line as far as this, tonight's discussion, I'm sorry?
I was going to say, did we look at that?
We haven't talked about that one, only.
So this is, you know, the private ball fields and the mini golf tags. It is for sale. It's zone general commercial, it's also master planned for commercial. And that may be, that may be what's appropriate. I just wanted to at least have the conversation.
I'll stick my neck out and say I think it could be orange personally.
So it's worth taking a look at?
Yeah. I mean, why not? The orange is the buffer between the higher density, between uses like the light industrial, you got the commercial there. How many times you go through a community and across the street are, there's some shopping, but there's an entrance to an apartment project?
Well, what if you did, took that whole corner?
Did the whole thing?
And made it kind of another similar to special planning area where you had a commercial element and a higher density residential.
This whole thing?
Yeah.
You're just trying to keep the Meyer Distribution Center out there, aren't you?
You're just trying to keep the Meyer Distribution Center out there, aren't you?
So, take the, what I call Mr. Pellerito's parcel, and then the sports complex to the south of it, and call, you know, consider it for its potential as another special planning area.
I think that's a good idea.
I think we went around the horn. So, some of the other thoughts on, on the memo are things that we can certainly discuss further, but if you could just kind of keep them in mind as we move through this process. We are meeting with our housing market consultant on March, excuse me, March, June 9th, and I don't see any reason not to invite you all to that, whoever's available. I think we, she's coming in from New Jersey, so she, we're looking at two o'clock for a meeting. I think Larry, you had mentioned your...
I can be on schedule?
Yep.
So, would that wrap up your future land use map discussion right now?
I'm happy to just call it wrapped up unless you have any more thoughts. I think I have enough to go by and enough to certainly have a more than productive conversation on June 9th.
Does anybody else have anything to add?
No.
All right. Now, let's move on to item A B, which is a discussion on the prospective amendments to section 5.26 of the Township Zoning Ordinance pertaining to agritourism signs. Charlie, send it right back your way, Dan.
Sir, so the ordinance review committee just had a meeting, leading right up to this, our seven o'clock meeting of the full planning commission, and as you're well aware, we have four areas of the zoning ordinance that we're looking at with respect to amending some of our sign regulations. Two of those areas, we discussed in pretty good detail and made some really good progress tonight. One is what we may allow in terms of home occupation signage, and the other is what we may allow in terms of portable signs within our village and our parcelville settlement areas. The remaining two are what we would look to do in terms of agritourism, which is what I want to talk about with the full planning commission this evening, and the other one is the donor recognition signs, which we're going to bring to the ordinance review committee at the, at our next meeting with that group. The ordinance review committee, when we met in, I want to say, our late April meeting, when we started kind of brainstorming agritourism, what I, and help me, correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard from the members of the, of the ordinance review committee was, they wanted to have a more full discussion on the agritourism aspects, because the agritourism and what we may or may not allow in terms of signage would be a significant diversion from what we allow elsewhere in the township for other types of commercial businesses. We talked about the possibility of off-site signage, which we wouldn't allow elsewhere, and, you know, for example, our agritourism businesses up along Clyde Road, the apple orchards and the cider mills, would we want to allow them off-site signage that we wouldn't allow for other types of businesses, say at the M-59 off ramps? Would we want to allow different types of signs? Does a monument sign make sense for a business along M-59, whereas it may not make the same amount of sense for a agritourism business in more of a rural environment? So, I drafted a memo dated May 15th where, well, I shouldn't say I drafted, the planning department drafted a memo dated May 15th, where we tried to cover some of those decision points and wanted to bring those to the full planning commission, which at least for tonight is the ordinance review committee plus one, and, and maybe try to get some broader policy thoughts on this before we take it back to the ordinance review committee and start looking at detailed amendments.
Go ahead, Keith.
I wanted to say something.
Go ahead.
One of the things that ordinance review committee looked at was, because how do you identify the businesses and how do you control where they, where they go, because there'd be some off-site signs? So, we were thinking about segregating the agricultural businesses and treating them independently, but we were uncomfortable doing that without the full commission reviewing that, because it was kind of never been done before. And of course, they need to have to help determine what's agribusiness and what's not. And I guess looking around here, it's, I don't feel comfortable discussing it too much detail without some more of the other commission, because the O R C's kicked it around so much already, and we got to some points where we had questioning ourselves, is that we didn't want to go any further without more input or feedback, because we need full support for doing some of these things, and we were clearly headed in the wrong direction, we didn't want to continue that path. So, that's why I, I'd feel better if we had more attendance and more commission here to give feedback.
I think too, we even talked about maybe having a further discussion on this particular one with the township board even, just from a policy standpoint, which may mean that this one's, I think it's fair to say this one's going to take the longest and have the most, most thought and effort put into it. But I can truly understand what Keith's saying, that the idea was to get, get some thoughts from the full planning commission. In that respect, Chair Fox, you are the full planning commission, because they've had their, this is the ordinance for the benefit of the audience, this is the ordinance review committee, plus Mr. Fox.
I do believe we need some input from the other three. I just had a couple of things that came to my mind, and whether you do or don't want to talk about them real quick, but one of the things I thought is, well, are you going to limit this to just the agricultural businesses within the township? Because you could have pumpkin patches and corn mazes all over the place outside and off the township, and all of a sudden, we end up with six off-premise advertising signs for agricultural business at the end of the freeway ramp. Is that what we're looking at?
That's one of the questions we had.
So, I, I had a, a big thing about its location, and then are you going to get into numbers of them, or how far away can the business be if we've, if, you know, from their sign? Can you come down and put a corn maze sign for spicers down here at 59 and Harland Road? How many are you going to be limited to? There are questions, I don't know the answer to, but they're part of what I was going to ask as we got into this. Well, what do we think about that?
The other thing was, is a good chunk of them are probably temporary signs, but then there, you know, it was spicers, for example, they're up to about nine months out of the year with the wine business stuff, so that, you know, where's the temporary rule? So, it's hard to establish that even, so that's, it's pretty in-depth.
And my thought was that, you know, basically, I think that people that have entered into this realm have basically decided that this is a focal point of their community, something that they want to promote and enable. And that's why I think part of the reason, it has to be a bigger discussion than the three of us, because it really has to be a nod from the township that this is a higher priority almost really, because you're contemplating giving them, you know, regulations that aren't shared by the other businesses, and, you know, is that fair?
Yeah.
I mean, I have heard from, from other board members, you know, that, you know, you gotta, you gotta have a level playing field, you can't pick winners and losers, you know, be prepared to do for one what you're going to do for the other. So, if, I don't think anybody is thinking that we're going to go throughout the township and allow off-premises signs for all our commercial users. So, it really has to be a buy-in that this is something different and special to that degree, that we're willing to look at those. If, if you don't want to look at those, I mean, there are other things that we can look at, but as far as that one thing, that off-premises thing, we really need, you know, more people's input on it.
Do we have any thoughts on, at least, let's park on the off-premises part for a second. Does, does that need to get to the board before the planning commission gets into it too much?
I kind of think it need, it does need some of that too. I don't know that, that it has to wait until we have a discussion here, but I don't think you spend a whole lot of time on working on it until you have their buy-in. Is there a eventual end approver of it?
Well, I wonder if you can have that discussion with them without having it here first, because I'm not sure what the other three are going to come up with questions that relate to that. Because, for example, the off-premise sign, are you going to allow it within a mile of the, of the actual location, you know, that you're advertising, the corn maze, the cider mill, the pumpkin patch? Are you going to limit it to businesses within the township? Are you going to allow the guy that's four miles past the township line to put a pumpkin patch sign at the end of the freeway ramp here? I, to me, that's a big one, because I think being the rural area of the state that we are, we get a lot of that, and because we have the main interchange that accesses a lot of those. If you're going to O S E L the township from the east, you're coming through this intersection here. And so, anybody that way is going to, or Clyde Road. So, how many are we going to have out there? We said we didn't want that stuff. One of the things was the clutter, but the other was the health safety element, an aspect of it, and the distraction to drivers. So, how are you going to limit it? Does the business get one? Does it pick up two, or is it unlimited?
And so, and so maybe before the planning commission and the ordinance review committee gets too far into thinking about those things, maybe it is a policy discussion at the board level of, are we going to allow them at all? And if so, then we'll send it back to this group to talk about how are we going to allow them?
I, I could go that way or the other way. I could say, go that route, or have the discussion at the planning commission with the points, you need to think about this.
Okay.
You know, do we want this off-premise sign? Then if we do, these are all the things that we've got to deal with and look at, and then let the board have that discussion.
Except that, you know, if you, if you do, if you, if the board weighs in it and they're not interested in off-premises signs, if that's a barrier, they're not interested in crossing, then you wasted all that discussion on all those other questions.
Yeah.
Then if they, if they, I think if they make a policy decision that they're willing to look at that, then you start getting into the weeds on how many, you know, do we let them from house? And those are kind of the stuff that we're charged with, is coming up with something reasonable, but if it's not a field that they're willing, I don't, I don't think it's a productive discussion at the planning commission.
So, I see four nodding heads, so can we, can the forum, do you agree tonight that maybe the better next step is to take this to the board for a policy discussion?
Right.
And go from there?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I agree.
Okay. I mean, I, I think we all knew that we wanted this to get to the board before it came back to the ordinance review committee for any detail. So, let's, let's go there next.
Is there any of the other parts of the agritourism that is worth discussing, or close book on it, do you remember?
I may defer to the planning commission. Again, if there's only four of us, or four of you tonight, let me ask this. Other than the off-site signage, do you see any, I mean, some of the other things, you know, the onsite stuff, and whether we would allow someone to paint a apple orchard sign on the side of a barn that we wouldn't allow them to paint on the side of a brick commercial building on M-59, I'm not sure, but that needs to be a long discussion at the board level. But I think the off-site signage is, is that?
To me, that's the biggest red flag of everything on it.
Okay.
I think you worked through the rest of that.
Okay.
If you want to allow somebody to paint a sign on a barn, can be an easier discussion. I know you're going to allow them to put signs out and on their property, so...
Okay. I, from where I sit, I'm satisfied with where we can go with this. We'll get to the board about the off-site signage discussion, and everything else, we'll have a better discussion at the planning commission once the board has chimed in and once we know we have a fuller attendance. Does that sound right?
Yeah, sounds right. So, that wraps up item B?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask a question back on A?
Sure, absolutely, sir.
You know, I know we focused on A, talking about the future land use map, which I couldn't contribute to at all to, but what about the other part of that sentence, saying the future land use chapter? Is that something we have to talk about later too?
Yeah, I, that's certainly a, it's certainly a continuing discussion. What was priority for me is knowing that we have this kickoff meeting with our, our consultant the first week of June.
Sure.
And I wanted to at least, if nothing else, slide across a updated version of this pink map and say, here's the areas that we think we want to talk about.
And then later, we talk about what we're going to do with that chapter and how we're going to update it and the whole bit, and how to take a peek at it.
Yeah, and I think a lot of that discussion will, will hinge upon what the outcome of that professional analysis is.
Sure.
But I, having said that, I think these are thoughts that I would like to just kind of all of us keep in our heads as we're going through this process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions on eight A or B? All right, well, then let's move to item nine, which is call to the public.
All of the, such a long range, one of the things nobody has to have, the wetlands area, kind of earmarked pretty clear, because a lot of that stuff that you went through, the reason why it's going to be slow to develop, it's wet. And even when you get into high golf over the heart of the lens, and close those courses at this time of year because it's so wet.
Right.
So, even though the zoning changes, shouldn't that area kind of be marked that it is wet? I mean, you have to stay off of the wet, and we have to stay in the opposite.
Oh, absolutely. And I, so a couple of things. The comprehensive plan currently does have a natural resources inventory that does identify where some of those sensitive natural environmental features are. That's not necessarily, necessarily reflected on this map, the future land use map, just because if you try to put too many things on one map, it starts to get, it starts to get cluttered. The, the future land use map is the 20-year vision of what this could be. And then if and when we get a site plan for a specific site, then absolutely, we look very closely at, at the natural impacts and how that, how this development is going to impact and protect those natural features.
And I have, and we have the ordinance about temporary permits, you need not build enough state deposit and build land or design off, and I have payment in action. Right now, we have enough customer built up, so that if I didn't have this sign, I probably wouldn't care, we'll get on the internet, and probably in today's new world, is there more people get on the internet than anything. A lot of people are looking for designation to loan, and then they run MapQuest to find it. So, you know, kind of what happened, because it seems like with spicers and mortars up there, I think that it's kind of an industry. It uses up land, and it keeps things, things are trees, because if we've got to realize that we've got to put air back in, we've got to take this air and get oxygen back into it. So, things like the orchard up there, spicer, I don't know anybody out there, but I know that whatever they're doing out there, right now with all the trees, is very valuable to the environmental area. Now, a lot of people say, well, they don't want to cut a Christmas tree down, but they don't realize that if we plant 10,000 trees, that's putting a lot of oxygen into the air on a regular basis. And then when we look around, we're going to be able to see how we're doing, because when we start looking at the trees, and we see these trees all dying and falling apart, you know, this area that we bring is very, very critical. Because some of the engagements that I do is that I have audit for the Southeastern Environmental Vision, National Organization that cleans up diesel fuel and stuff, because they're right down there in that area in Detroit where you have that area. But they do a lot of things for the environment, so I'm probably getting into environmental stuff a little more than, you know, most people might be aware of it. And those are just my comments. And those are just my comments, I'd like to make. Uh, one thing that I've heard that I really would like to hear is that if we bring something in from New Jersey, I think that, one way or another, I know all of this area that you guys are talking about, I've been up here for 40 years. My property joined your township this, uh, quarter, but as things develop and I get through all these areas, you know, we have a lot of wet lands up here and it's kind of, kind of a curve where people are gonna go, because we do have a lot of wet up here. And that area along 23, when you drive through there, it kind of looks like, uh, 23 down this side of what Lake Hills in there. It's that, uh, that is, that is really wet. And whatever that zoning is, if you gotta have a 23 acre drop, that seems logical because you're gonna have to, uh, can you turn, get your sewer line into that yellow line?
I'm sorry, said it.
But can you get into the yellow, uh, those sewer?
Yellow is sewer, correct.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have water.
Yeah, and the blue is water.
The blue up there is water.
We have more sewer than we have water, in terms of linear feet of service.
Okay. Do we bring in that water on, uh, do we have, do they pump some, or are they bringing that in?
It's tower.
We have, uh, at least three municipal wells, uh, that, that serve our, oh, excuse me.
That's called it.
Correct. And then we've got a water tower, we've got, uh, pump stations throughout the township. But our municipal water is.
You know, that helps if the water sewer gets into some of those areas and they got water in the sewer, you know, that kind of makes it probably underwhelming, but, you know, trying to get rid of, uh, if you don't have to put sanding soil in for the second scale, then, you know, if your density gets to be a reiteration.
Correct.
But, uh, you know, these are interesting things that unfortunately not many people pay attention to. But in connection with a guy coming from New Jersey, you know, I think that having local guy that believes in, and I don't know anybody, and right now I'm able to find a company here myself, but get local people to be prepared. There's a guy coming out of New Jersey, my daughter lives in New Jersey, and we could get on a train, get to New York in about two hours. And then, uh, when I went out there to visit her one time, I went down and took a look at the district, that's the only time that they see. So, but, uh, that's kind of rocked up the whole audience here tonight. It doesn't seem nice that more people are ready to see what's going on. Generally, I see that some of your ideas and what you're doing are way further ahead than some of the other areas around you. You know, like Osceola, I'm not exactly able to be thankful like this. I don't know, but, you know, it's a county joining there. But I think realistically, there's been a river there in the top that's trying to get in the strip. And I understand that it's all up to the people.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Um, Dave, planners report.
Taco Bell, they were hoping to break ground this week, but because of all the rain, their excavator, their, the joke was their dirt mover turned into a mud mover, and so he found himself a week behind, so they're gonna be looking at breaking ground next week. Uh, probably the early morning after Memorial Day, so Tuesday morning. Uh, I had a note on here to mention that I just met with the ordinance review committee, but we all know that very well. Uh, some concept plans that are in play, uh, Copa Biological is interested in expanding their facility. They had a concept meeting with us. Uh, they look, are looking to, um, have that on the planning commission's agenda for possibly even the late June meeting, uh, if they get us what they need here, uh, quite soon. Stone Pro also wants to do an expansion to their facility, and we've had some concept meetings with them, and they just dropped off their latest and greatest concept plan and, uh, just this afternoon, so we'll take a look at that and see where that one's going. Uh, we have a couple of interested parties, uh, looking to do something just down the road here at the corner, northeast corner of M-59 and, and Clark Road, uh, possibly a gas station, possibly a, a fast food use and/or, and/or some combination thereof. Um, so if, if both are as excited as they say they are, we'll maybe be seeing that here in the near future. The safer roads and pathways, so we obviously had a very good turnout for the town hall meeting at the planning commission, uh, earlier this month, and we've had very good turnout at all the town hall meetings for the safer roads and pathways. Folks are very interested in that and, um, certainly have their opinions and, and we're listening to those, and we have a lot to, uh, bring back to the, uh, safer roads and pathways task force at a meeting on June 4th, and we will see where the plan goes from there. Um, most likely, we'll do some revisions to the, the plan based on how the task force sees fit, and then we'll take the plan out for more public input throughout the summer, and, uh, the board will decide in August whether or not that's gonna be a ballot initiative. Uh, the request for proposals for our new parks and recs plan went out to about a dozen planning consultants this week, and so we're giving them a couple of weeks to get their proposals back to us. Uh, so we're looking at doing some evaluation, possibly some interviews in early to mid-June. Um, we will also, we talked about having a, a task force for the parks and rec plan. We feel that the task force method has worked out well for the safer roads and pathways plan, so we will probably do something on a, a similar method for the parks and rec plan, so more to come on that. The township will have a presence at the memorial parade this weekend. We'll have a tent out there and where we will be given as much information as anybody who wants to listen about the safer roads and pathways plan. Uh, the township held its large item cleanup day this past Saturday at Heartland High School, um, and it, it seemed to be a, a great turnout, great event. I mean, we collected a lot of stuff, um, and we were able to salvage a lot of stuff. A lot of, uh, scrap metal got separated out, a lot of tires got separated out, electronics, and so it's good to see that all that, uh, trash is not necessarily going into landfill. And I know that, uh, the 300 and something folks who came to the event, uh, drove away happy, saying, wow, what a, what a great service for the township to provide. And so, um, I, I think, I think it, it worked out very well and, and something that we'll continue to do. And other than wishing everyone a happy Memorial Weekend, that's all, that's all I have on my list of things to mention as part of my planners report.
All right. Thanks. Uh, committee reports, comments, anyone?
Nope, just, uh, I mean, as Dave just mentioned, Memorial Day weekend here in Heartland, big weekend, uh, things, Luminary Walk on Sunday evening in Heartland Cemetery, uh, begins at, uh, shortly before dusk, I believe. So then, uh, Pancake Breakfast on Memorial Day at Village Elementary starts at 7:00 AM. Uh, there's a ceremony at the, uh, Partialville Bridge at, uh, 10 o'clock. There's another ceremony at the, uh, Heartland Cemetery at 11:00. And then the parade starts at, uh, 12 o'clock and, uh, through that all, there'll be vendors over at Apple Park for fun there as well, so. Hope everybody comes up.
Okay. Thank you. Just a motion to adjourn, please. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close any motion here. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.